All right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. And welcome, as I call to order, the June 2023 meeting of the Escambia County School Board. Whether you are joining us via our live stream or in the audience, we appreciate your interest in the education of the students of Escambia County. I ask that you silence your cellphones at this time. I remind you that if you wish to speak to either an agenda item or at public hearing, public forum for policy changes, or at the public forum, you must complete a speaker request form found on the table at the rear of the room and bring it forward to Ms. Harris at the front table. On the form, please be sure to indicate whether your intention is to speak at the public forum or to a specific item on tonight's agenda. You must also have the forms turned in before adoption of the agenda. Forms will not be accepted after the adoption of the agenda. It's the board's practice to pull items from the consent agenda when someone asks to speak to them. The consent agenda items include curriculum and instruction, finance, human resources, and operations. You must submit your speaker form prior to the approval of the consent agenda. This meeting was properly advertised in the Pensacola News Journal on May 25th, legal notice number 5697110. It is the tradition of the Escambia County School Board to begin our meeting with an invocation or a motivational moment followed by the pledge of allegiance. This month, Mr. Williams, District 3, will lead us.
Thank you, Chairman. That gives me great pleasure to introduce you for our invocation today, a student athlete of mine, Reverend James Watson. He is the pastor of Highway to Heaven Apostolic Church. Whereone, please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Oh gracious and everlasting God, our Father, you said in your word that for all things you give thanks. God, we thank you for this day, we thank you for this hour. God, we thank you for every board member, we thank you for the superintendent. God, we pray tonight that thou will be done. We're asking God that you be in this meeting, give wisdom, give knowledge, give understanding. God, let peace abound, God. We pray, God, that where there's division, bring unity. Bring soundness of mind, soundness of heart, oh God, because we know that where there is division, there can be no vision. We pray now, God, that you bless each and every person, God, that's gathered under the sound of my voice. God, we pray for every principal that's going to be appointed on today, oh God. God, give them wisdom, knowledge, understanding, oh God. Allow them to lead our schools in the matter that you see fit, oh God. We pray tonight, oh God, that we leave here better and not bitter, God. We thank you for this opportunity, God. We pray for every parent, God. We pray for every school employee, God. But most of all, we pray for our children. God, cover them like only you can, God. Keep them from hurt, harm, and danger. We'd be grateful to give thy name all of the praise, glory, and honor. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. At this time, we will move to the adoption of the agenda. Mr. Superintendent, are there any additions or deletions to your recommended agenda?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, there are a few. Under Section 6, Proposed Additions or Revisions to District Rules, first reading, Item A is deleted and Item B is added, changes to the student progression plan. Under Section 7, Items requiring Public Hearing, Item E is an add, emergency rule adoption 4.06, education media materials. Under Section 18, Consent Curriculum Workforce Education, Item B is deleted. Under Section 20, Consent Finance, Item C is added, financial statements by fund, and Item D is an add, financial status report, employee benefit trust fund. Section 24, Finance and Purchasing, Item Q is deleted, Item CC is an add, consensus technology primary engineering agreement. Under Section 27, Human Resources Risk Management, Item A is deleted with Item B being added, property boiler and machinery and crime insurance. Under Section 40, Items from the Board, Item A is deleted, Item B is added, appointment of FSBA advocacy committee representative of an alternative, and then Item C is an add, interim superintendent contract. Under Section 41, Items from the Superintendent, Item A, disciplinary reassignments is deleted with it only being added back, and Item C is disciplinary reassignments. And that concludes our additions and revisions.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. State statute and school board rules require that changes made to the agenda after publication be based on a finding of good cause determined by the person designated to preside over the meeting and stated in the record. Is there any objection from any board member to the additions or deletions? Ms. Hightower?
I just wanted to ask if we were going to make that change in the agenda?
If we are going to make a change in the agenda, we are going to move administrative appointments, Item 5A, up under the special recognitions. So it will come right before the public forum. Thank you. And every board member is agreeable to that change? Thank you. All right. Do I have a motion to atop the agenda as amended for good cause at this meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Hightower and Mr. Adams. Any discussion? Being none, please vote.
Pass is five to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Moving into committee and departmental reports, we start with, well, the PTA presentation has been canceled. So we will start with the Escambia High School Engineering NASA Rover Competition.
Mr. Harold will start the presentation. Thank you, Mr. Harold.
Thank you so much, Board and Superintendent, for giving us this opportunity to honor these students who have worked so hard over the last nine years in this NASA Rover Challenge. What you see before you is the culmination of nine years' worth of students' input to this thing. NASA gives them a list of parameters that this vehicle has to qualify with. It has to fold up small, you can't see it from where you're at, but there's a linkage in the center of this thing that makes it completely fold in half vertically so that it can fit inside of a spacecraft. Then the mission is two human passengers have to use human power to transverse multiple objectives that simulate the surface of Mars or another celestial body, and they have to perform tasks while they're doing that. So this is the kind of thing that our students in our CTE classes are doing every single day, and Mr. Tim Deloze, the instructor for this program, can't be here tonight, but we have a video of him that we're going to show you in a second. I just want you to pay really close attention to the details of this, though, because these students that you see before you, William and Kayla, and the rest of their team, used vacuum molded carbon fiber composite materials to make those wheels. There are pieces on here that the students designed in Autodesk 3D, made 3D printer models of it, and then went into the lab after they tested it and made real metal versions of the same materials. Those wheels, they 3D printed molds for the urethane and poured the urethane themselves, adhered it to those carbon fiber wheels, and then have a carbon fiber rand around it. What I'm telling you is, our students, right here in our schools, are doing some of the most amazing scientific and engineering-related activities, and both of these young people here with us today are going to UWF to study engineering probably as soon as they leave here tonight. So without further ado...
Congratulations, students.
Mr. Deloze says this really fast in the video that they got first place this year. I always knock three times when I say something important in the classroom. They got first place. Not just first place against a region, first place in the entire country, and there were international competitors there. The first place in high school division, yes, from all over the world. High schools from everywhere competed in this, and they got first place. I think I've said that three times now that you got first place? Six different countries involved, and it gets even bigger because there is no chance for the high schools to compete against the colleges, but when we stacked their points up against the colleges, they would have had second place against all of the universities in the world. Can we play the video of Mr. Deloze now? Let me step aside and let them take over.
Hello, I'm Tim Deloze, the teacher at Escambia High School's Engineering Academy. I'm sorry I couldn't be here with you today, but I just wanted to take a time and talk about our capstone project that we do in this academy. Since 2014, we've been participating in NASA's Human Exploration Rover Challenge. This is a project that a lot of colleges and universities use for their capstone project for the mechanical engineering programs, and every year, we've improved our iteration. Our design has gotten better and better and better, and this past year, when we went to the 2023 event, we actually finished in first place. This project gives students a lot of hands-on experience, things like taking a conceptual design and creating an actual prototype, a physical object that can be tested. They get to work with 3D printing, they mold actual urethane treads for this vehicle. We use a lot of carbon fiber to reduce weight. You know, we create drivetrain components, metals, all sorts of hands-on stuff to take what's going on in our minds and create the real thing that we have to bring to Huntsville to compete against these other schools. This year, there were over 40 schools domestically and internationally at the event, and like I said, we finished in first place. You have some students here with you tonight that would like to talk to you about their experience. Thank you for your time.
My name is William Stale, and I was a member of the chassis team. So I helped build and construct some of the chassis components, and that had a big impact on my life because I think it helps solidify my desire to become a mechanical engineer when I grow up. So I'm going to go to the UWF and obtain an associate's in mechanical engineering and then transfer to another four-year school to help get my bachelor's in mechanical engineering.
And my name is Kayla Guilford. I was the team lead for our rover this year, and more than just learning about engineering, this project really helped me to solidify a feeling of empowerment and being able to lead a group, and not only lead, but work really well together with everyone. I feel like this really brought all of us together. So I'm going to UWF for electrical engineering to get my bachelor's degree, and then I'm hoping to transfer to either UC Boulder or UMass Lowell to get my master's degree in engineering. And my dream is to work on automated machinery that can either be sent to the space station or to extraterrestrial masses to help people live more comfortably on other planets outside of Earth.
Board members, any questions or comments? Mr. Adams?
I just said wonderful, wonderful. Actually, I was a composite repairer on the H-53 main helicopter blade for the Navy, H-60 Special Operations. That composite work you're doing, it'll take you a long way. It has a lot of, people don't realize how much it is used and everything they use every day. So congratulations, great job, number one. We'll do it three times, right? Great job.
Thank you.
Mr. Williams?
Just want to say congratulations and job well done and how you represented us at those competitions and much success in your future at UWF and beyond that. Congratulations.
Hi, Tyler.
Again, third time, congratulations. And go women. I had to do that. I had to do that. I'm so, so impressed with our students, our teacher, that all of this could be accomplished, and you set us up in our county to show people what amazing students we have and what talented teachers we have, and thank you so much for helping everybody see that.
Mr. Slayton?
As you've heard, congratulations. But let me just say, for students to take out as much time as you have into an area that a lot of your colleagues have no idea what you're doing, and I just have to congratulate you and say thank you for stepping out and doing that and preparing for your future. And I hope through the school, the principal, everybody, that you will keep us informed of what you're doing and where you're going next with all the great things that you're doing. It's far beyond what we ever dreamed of, and you're a shining example of the youth of tomorrow and of today. Thank you very much.
Mr. Superintendent.
William and Kayla, please tell your fellow students how proud we are of them. And, Mr. Harold, the first opportunity I had when teachers return, I will visit with Mr. Deloze. This is just a fine example of what's going on in Escambia County Public Schools. You are champions. Thank you very much.
And if I could just give a really big thank you to Mr. Deloze, because he can't be here today, but I came to Escambia my sophomore year, and I was in a really hard place, and he was really a big impact on my life, and I would not have even dreamed that I could get to where I am without him. So even though he's not here, I want to thank him a lot. He's had a big impact on so many students.
Thank you, Kayla, for recognizing that. I know that everyone has congratulated you, but I want to thank you. I want to thank you for taking and showing that the students in Escambia County can achieve whatever they could dream of, and I'm so very proud of you. I know that your parents must be ready to burst when they found out that you came back number one. I mean, that is, that's the epitome of really achieving everything that your dreams have sent you out to do, and I know that your future is just as bright. So thank you, and continue to make your family and Escambia County proud.
Are their families here?
Yeah, are your fam, no. Tell them that we thank them. All right. Thank you all.
Thank you.
My own little segue is that I hope Channel 3 in their crisis in the classroom was watching celebrations in the classroom and the community.
Mr. Fetsco? If you don't mind, William and Kayla, if you'll come up to the dais and greet the board, we would also like to get a picture, and Mr. Harold's going to take it for us.
Yeah, let's go by the roof. All right, as we said earlier, we're not going to go to the public forum at this moment. We will come back to it. We're going to move to 5A administrative appointments. Is there a motion on Item 5A administrative appointments?
Yes. Moving, the motion to accept the superintendent's recommendation for administrative appointments.
Second.
I've moved and seconded. Any discussion? Being none, please vote.
Approved, five to zero.
Thank you.
And tonight, we're going to do something a little bit different. So Mrs. Deputy Payne and Mr. Wilson will call each individual's name. You'll have the opportunity to come up and greet the board. Mr. Harold will take a picture, and then you'll be able to go back and provide us with some brief comments, and we're going to go through all 23 of you fairly quickly. So we're extremely happy and proud for you tonight.
Y'all ready to try this?
Our administrative appointments for the 23-24 school year begin with Malia Adams from Coordinator EOC, Affirmative Action and Recruitment, to Director Human Resources Services to Human Resources Management. Mrs. Adams? Real quick. Mrs. Payne, Ms. Palaciano, and Mrs. Penrose are donating their time to me, so raise your hand. Ms. Buswell, please set the clock for nine minutes. Just kidding, 30 seconds. Superintendent, Mr. Leonard, Deputy Superintendent, Mrs. Payne, School Board Representatives, and Assistant Superintendents. I am very honored and blessed for another opportunity, now in a different role that is going to help make a difference in the areas that impact our future generations. My experiences over the years have allowed me to work with some dynamic educators and build relationships that I continue to be grateful for. To my husband, my children, and family who are my biggest true leaders and supporters, I do all that I do because of them. Thank you so much to my friends and colleagues, my AKA sisterhood, you know who you are. Thank you, and I will continue to lean on you. To those in HR who took a chance and hired me as a clerk in 1990, being mentored and hired as a first-year teacher under Sandra Rush, a high school assistant principal under Leora Memes and Mike Sherrill, and then a principal under Vicky Gabowski and Dr. Michael Roberts, thank you. I had the pleasure of working alongside some great leaders and educators and staff who trusted me, and now that path has led me right back to HR. Again, Mr. Leonard, Ms. Crosstag, Ms. Combs... Again, Mr. Leonard, Ms. Crosstag, Ms. Combs, and all of HR, thank you so much for this new path. I listened, I watched, I applied, and I learned. And I am so excited that I get to do it all over again each and every morning. We will continue to manage humans at every level of Escambia County Public Schools because human resources are our best natural resources. So, ending this with a sentence from one of my favorite songs, "May the work I've done speak for me."
Kelly Crosstag, Director... From Director of Human Resource Services II to Assistant Superintendent for Human Resource Services.
Got to bring it down to my height. Superintendent Leonard, Deputy Superintendent Payne, Board Chair Fetzko, Board Members, Mr. Slaton, Ms. Hightower, Mr. Williams, and Mr. Adams. I would like to thank you for believing in me and trusting in me to lead the Human Resources Department for our school district. Once Mr. Leonard reached out to me about this new opportunity, I told our department that I have learned over the years not to try to fill Mr. Leonard's shoes, but to wear my own shoes and lead my own way. The joy of that for me is that the superintendent, all of the superintendents actually for which I have served, and this board have always allowed me to do just that. And I'm very appreciative of that. Thank you for that and the promise to... I promise to continue to give the employees and students of this district everything I've got. Malia, Courtney, Kevin, and our whole team, join me in that pledge. The theme in our office right now is "I've Got You." I want to commit to you now and all the people that are about to come to this podium to accept their new positions that we've got all of you in HR. It is my privilege to lead our Human Resources team. They work so hard and believe in the team mentality. Stepping up to the plate and believing that next man up is the way you work is what we do. As always, I dedicate this moment to my amazing and supportive family... I always cry when I get to this point, sorry everyone. My family of retired Escambia County educators. My favorite is of course the retired band director. Ms. Payne's retired band director. And my two favorite graduates of the Escambia County Public Schools, Nick and Haley. Thank you again.[811.13][811.13](Applause).
Dr. Dana Body from High School Assistant Principal at Escambia High School to now High School Principal at Escambia High School.
Good evening. Superintendent Leonard, School Board Members, Executive Staff, thank you for giving me this opportunity. Thank you to Ms. Payne and Ms. Morgan and so many others in this district who have been and continue to be an inspiration and a part of my journey. Thank you to my wonderful husband, children, mom, dad, for their constant support, most of who are sitting on the front row. One is in Romania, serving in the Army. And I promise to work hard daily in my actions to tell the story of my commitment to the students, parents, faculty, and staff of Escambia High School.
Mrs. Tyvanna Bolanger from Middle School Assistant Principal at Ernest Ward Middle School to Middle School Principal at Ernest Ward.
Good evening. I'm honored to receive the appointment of principal to the greatest little hidden gym in Escambia County. I've had the pleasure of serving there for four years and I thank you for allowing me to continue that. Along my educational journey, I've had the pleasure to work with wonderful teachers and leaders. And these leaders have pushed me to be the very best version of myself. A few of those leaders and teachers and staff that I've worked with over the years are here supporting us tonight. And as my wonderful leader, Ms. Malia Adams taught me years ago, teamwork makes the dream work. And I have found that that could not be any more true. In the past few weeks... And Ms. Crosstag, I'm going to cry now, I'm trying not to. I've received more support than I could have even dreamed of. The kindest words of praise and prayer have come my way. My family and friends have jumped in to help me figure it out and press on. Teachers have asked how they can help. Our support staff has reached out. Parents and community members have prayed for me and shared words of encouragement. One of the gentlemen from our north end maintenance team came over the other day and told me, "It's not necessary to know everything. I know people and I can call on them."[1026.33][1026.33](Laughter). The... I'm overwhelmed with emotion due to the kindness, the unity, and the strength of my team. Teamwork really does make the dream work. And my promise to all of you and to those that I serve is that I'll work hard every day with a student-centered approach. And my actions will tell my story, the story of who I am, and they will prove my commitment to our school and our students in our district. Thank you very much.[1050.08][1050.08](Applause).
Mr. Alan Culp from Consulting Teacher for Start Professional Learning to High School Assistant Principal at Escambia High School.
My first job in education was at Escambia High School 20 couple of years ago as a long-term substitute teacher. I'm extremely excited and honored to return to Escambia as an assistant principal. So, I'd like to thank the board and the superintendent for your faith and your trust in me. Along the way, I've worked with some very talented people, some leaders that have made a huge impact on my life, and I'd like to take one second to thank them. It's Carolyn Spooner, who's my principal at Tate High School, Ms. Rick Shackle, and Caroline Gray. They taught me an awful lot. I'll take the lessons that I learned and I will take them to Escambia High School with me. I'd also like to thank my wife and my daughter for their support and their faith in me. I would not be here without them. Thank you very much.[1146.10][1146.10](Applause).
We recognize while he cannot be here tonight, Mr. Jacob Freeman, who will be moving from Curriculum Coordinator at Ferry Pass Elementary to Assistant Principal at Navy Point Elementary. Christina Gallacher from Curriculum Coordinator at Scenic Heights Elementary to Assistant Principal at Bellevue Elementary.
Good evening. Mr. Superintendent and the School Board Members, I'd like to thank you so much for this incredible opportunity. I am so excited to start the journey at Bellevue Elementary and serve you guys proudly.
Ms. Adrian Green, Middle School, formerly Middle School Assistant Principal at Warrington Middle School, now the principal of Ferry Pass Middle School.
Good evening, School Board Members, Superintendent Leonard, and Deputy Payne. I would like to thank you for this opportunity to continue my leadership in Escambia County Public Schools. In the words of former President John F. Kennedy, "Leadership and learning are indispensable to each other." Every position that I have served here in this county, I have always learned something new and will continue to do so. As a leader, my commitment to learning will be modeled not only to teachers, but to students as well. I'd like to thank my family, my husband, my daughter, parents, and siblings for their continual support through my journey. I am thankful for all the former administrators, colleagues, and students that I have been able to work with and grow from. The past two years, I've had the privilege of serving at a school where I was challenged and learned how to be more reflective in my leadership. I would like to thank my mentor, friend, and prayer warrior, Dr. Reggie Lipnick, for her support. I would like to thank Dr. Michael Roberts for always being there and showing up. I want to thank my church family, Antioch, for their prayers and support these past two years. Lastly, I want to thank the dream team. Dr. Griffin, thank you for listening, collaborating, and being my other right hand. I appreciate you, brother. Mr. Denny Wilson, I remember first meeting you and asking, "May I go pull small groups at Oak Crest?" Who would have known it would have led us to working together side by side? Mr. Wilson, I have learned a great deal from you. Please know, your leadership has impacted my leadership, and I hope to continue to provide the same impact to other future leaders. I promise to commit myself to Ferry Pass Middle as I have given all of my other assignments. The Eagles will soar to the next level.
Mrs. Sarah Guy from ESE Behavior Coach to Administrator on Special Assignment at Hope Horizons at Judy Andrews.
Thank you so much again. I truly appreciate every one of you being here, supporting me. Thank you Superintendent, Mr. Leonard, and the rest of the School Board Members as well. I truly appreciate this opportunity that I have been given. I truly would not be here today without many people, God, my family, friends, my work family, and former leaders that have helped guide me and support me on the path that I'm meant to be on, which is this one at Hope Horizon. So, thank you so much. I can't wait to begin this new journey.[1475.73][1475.73](Applause).
Mrs. Sarah Huelos, Curriculum Coordinator at Sims Elementary to now Elementary School Assistant Principal at Sims Elementary.
Thank you so much for this opportunity, Superintendent and School Board. I do want to first start and take this opportunity to acknowledge the state that education is in right now and how hard it is. So, I don't take this responsibility lightly. I want to express my sincere appreciation to all the educators in our district, from teacher assistants all the way up to district leaders. I thank you for your commitment and hard work towards such an honorable goal, as was stated by Deputy Superintendent Mrs. Payne, that we work until all of the children are well. I'm going to do my very best to live the life united for children, striving to have the greatest impact I can on the children, parents, teachers, and staff at OJ Sims. My roots have already been established within this school community over the last two years. And I'm excited. But lastly, it takes a village, last but not least of course, and I couldn't have done this without my village, to my wonderful husband, energetic and amazingly entertaining children, parents, you know, near and far in-laws, and my other many cheerleaders. Thank you. I love you all and hope you know how much you mean to me and have helped me achieve this goal.
Ms. Dawn Enman from Instructional Coach at Bellevue Middle School to Middle School Assistant Principal at Ernest Ward Middle.
Wow, this is awesome. That's all I have to say. Good evening, esteemed School Board Members, Superintendent Leonard, Deputy Payne, fellow colleagues, community members, friends, and family. It is absolutely my honor and privilege to be standing before you today to accept this promotion to Assistant Principal at Ernest Ward Middle. Go Eagles! I have so many people to thank. I would like to thank first my husband and my daughter for always believing in me and supporting me and sometimes seeing what I could not see. My sister for being my lifelong cheerleader, thank you also. I especially want to thank the 305 crew at Bellevue Middle School, they're in this crowd, for the same support and believing in me and seeing me through this process. And Principal Lovely and Dr. Roberts always telling me to trust God's work, and they were so very right. I also want to thank my Second Street crew who are more than just neighbors but family and they're in the gallery with me tonight and my biggest fans and supporters. I would not be here without them, and I thank them all from the bottom of my heart. I am so looking forward to working with the awesome and amazing Tyvanna Bolanger, and we are going to be awesome and amazing. Thank you again, and go Eagles![1747.11][1747.11](Applause).
Ms. Cheryl Jonacek, Elementary School Assistant Principal, formerly at Melino Park Elementary to now Elementary School Principal at Melino Park Elementary. Ms. Jonacek.[1765.45][1765.45](Applause).
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much for this opportunity. I'm proud to be a part of our school district for 35 years now, so a long time. Started when I was 21, so... And I'm very excited and honored to get to continue working with my wonderful Assistant Principal, the faculty, staff, families and students at Melino Park Elementary. A very special thank you to my family for being an educator's family for all these years and being so patient and understanding. And a thank you to all the friends I've made along the way. We're looking forward to an amazing year at Melino Park, so head north and come visit us.
Ms. Latricia Laurent, Instructional Coach, formerly at Pine Forest High School to now Middle School Assistant Principal at Bellevue Middle.
Good evening, everyone. Superintendent Leonard, Deputy Superintendent Payne and respected School Board members. I am deeply honored and humbled to be standing here before you tonight as an official, official instructional leader at Bellevue Middle School. This appointment would not be possible without my tribe of family and friends who have been there every step of the way. First of all, my mother, who is my rock and my prayer warrior, my sister, who are in New Orleans as we speak watching us. She's my ride or die cheerleader. My five children who have been my inspiration. I started my career in education as a sub, yes, as a sub, and then I progressed to a paraprofessional, followed by a Head Start teacher and yes, shout out to my early Head Start people in the house tonight. They believed in me before I believed in myself. I then became a middle school teacher. Yeah, I know, that's crazy, a big jump. It was there when I figured out my why. I loved the classroom. You see, I was a student who really struggled with reading. I'd been retained as a below level reader. I was told I'd never be anything, but there I was successfully teaching students and yes, iron sharpened iron. Believe it or not, my love for the classroom was fueled by an administrator with just as much energy as me. Much love, much shout out, my shout out to Dr. Shepherd and yes, she's here tonight too. I was inspired to step outside of the classroom by Ms. Ray who took a chance on me as an instructional coach here in Escambia County. I learned a great deal from the Pine Forest High School administrative team. And as I embark on this new chapter at Bellevue Middle School with Principal Lovely and Assistant Principal Dr. Griffin, I look forward to impacting the lives of the at-possible students. Yeah, notice I didn't say at risk. I said at possible. Who feel much like I did. I look forward to inspiring the teachers and assisting them to reach their full potential. We are Bellevue Warriors. We exhibit pride, purpose and perseverance. Thank you all so much for your time and support tonight. I look forward to working with each of you and I encourage you all to support our mission. I promise you all, you'll be hearing from me.[852.32][852.32](laughter) (applause)
Ms. Kimberly Lipnicki, formerly Dean at Escambia High School to now Middle School Assistant Principal at Ransom Middle.
Good evening, Mr. Leonard, Ms. Payne and members of the School Board. It's my honor to stand before you alongside of this distinguished group of leaders tonight and accept the role of Assistant Principal at Ransom Middle School. I'm grateful to my colleagues, to my mentors, to my family and my friends for the years of guidance and support. You can count on me to lead tirelessly in servitude to our community and I ask for everyone's constant prayers as I strive to fulfill the mission that God places before me every day. Go Tigers![983.61][983.61](applause) And on a side note, Mr. Leonard, next time you call me, ask me if I'm parked.
Of this community, remember it always takes a village to raise and educate our children. I can't do it alone. Once again, thank you very much.[1276.23][1276.23](applause)
Test, okay, it's working. Alicia Mathis, from Assistant Principal Suter Elementary to School Principal Suter
I was standing so long back there, my foot fell asleep. Mother and my family throughout my professional journey, they have been awesome during the many missed dinners and adjusted plans due to the needs of my school family. Suter has been met with many challenges this year, some most schools may never experience, but I give God the glory that we made it through. The faculty, staff, students and family understand what it means to be a team and a family. I pray that I will continue to be blessed with the wisdom to lead our school in what is best for students. I'm looking forward to the bright future with my Suter family and I thank you so much for this opportunity.[1408.23][1408.23](applause)
Russell Moore, Teacher, Warrington Middle School to Assistant Principal at Pine Forest
Thank you to everyone for the opportunity. I'm a retired principal from Alabama. This past summer, I was mowing grass and deciding if that was really what the good Lord wanted me to do at this moment in my life and stumbled across an advertisement and spoke to Ms. Green at Warrington Middle School and was instantly impressed by her passion for what was going on at that school. Got to meet Mr. Wilson the next day, very impressed with them. And the next week, I was teaching at Warrington Middle School and it was a great experience. Worked with some great teachers on the hall that I worked on and some great people throughout the building, so it was a great opportunity. I met Ms. Ray at Pine Forest High School, looking forward very much to working with that entire staff and doing some good work for those students and that community. So, thank you again for the opportunity.[1503.51][1503.51](applause)
Good evening. I am just so excited to be back. Last year, a year ago, I had the honor of retiring from the district with 37 years. And most people count down to retirement. I've been counting the days this year that I could get through so I could come back. There has not been a day that I haven't thought about everybody in this room. You know you're really bored when you look forward to the board meetings to watch so you have something to do. But I am. This is family. The hardest thing I ever had to do was turn in my key and badges and walk away. That year is long, it does go fast, but I'm delighted to be back and I'm looking forward to serving.
Don Morris, Assistant Principal, Blue Angels Elementary to Principal of Pine Meadow
Good evening. To Mr. Leonard and Ms. Payne and the Board members, thank you for this opportunity to lead in the Escambia County School District. I want to thank my family for loving me unconditionally and always supporting me. You are all amazing and nothing short of perfect. I love you.
Laura Robinson, from Curriculum Coordinator at Longleaf Elementary to Assistant Principal
Good evening. I am a proud product of Escambia County Public Schools, having attended both the old and new Buell Elementary, Bellevue Middle and Pensacola High School as a member of the first graduating class of the International Baccalaureate Program. Go Tigers! I wanted my work in life... I wanted my work in life to center around serving children and pursuing a degree in early childhood in elementary education was a natural fit. Connie Farish hired me as a Chapter One tutor at Jim Allen Elementary in the spring of 1992. This would be my first job in the district, which led to a long teaching career there after college. I have many fond memories of all the relationships built during those years, including Rebecca McBride and Rachel Watts, who were two very impactful mentors that inspired me to pursue educational leadership. When the time was right, I accepted the position as Curriculum Coordinator at Longleaf, where Troy Brown and Quinn Evans gave me great guidance. I was there for a little over a year before being called up by Dr. Smith as interim Assistant Principal this past August for Melino Park Elementary. Cheryl Johnacek took me right in as a partner in administration, and I have learned so much from her. Encouraging and helping our teachers and staff grow and celebrating student success is very rewarding work. Thank you Superintendent Leonard, thank you Deputy Payne, Dr. Smith, Mrs. Farish, Mrs. Cunningham, members of our school board, and others for this exciting opportunity. Thank you to my children who spent countless hours while growing up helping me in my classroom. To my husband for his support and always cooking delicious meals for me in the evening time. And to my parents, so thankful to have my mama here with me tonight, who have always been my greatest cheerleaders and had my back in everything that I wanted to do. I am blessed beyond measure to continue to serve at Melino Park Elementary with the most wonderful students, families, faculty, and staff you can find, and in the community that is also my home. Thank you so much.
Amy Robey, from Assistant Principal at Sims Elementary to Principal at Helen Caro Elementary.
Thank you all so much for your time and for this opportunity. I know y'all have been standing there for a minute. Thank you. It is an honor to be recognized tonight among the distinguished leaders in Escambia County. When I began in the district as a kindergarten teacher, I would have never believed that I would be standing here 27 years later as a principal appointee. I am so thankful today for the principals and mentors who saw leadership potential in me and gave me many opportunities to grow. They pushed me and gave me opportunities to step outside my comfort zone, outside the walls of my own classroom, and I would not be here today if it were not for them. My journey as a school leader started seven years ago and has been one of tremendous personal and professional growth. It has been my pleasure to serve along some of the most dedicated educators in Escambia County at OJ Sims. I'm thankful to each of them for believing in me and for supporting me. The students, teachers, and families of Sims will always have a special place in my heart. I am also grateful for my ever supportive family. They're all... They love me and they keep me going on the hard days. I am so thrilled for this next step in my journey, and it is my honor and privilege to serve as Helen Caro's new captain. Thank you for trusting me to lead, and I am beyond excited to begin my adventure with my new Caro's family. Thank you so much.
Shaka Tribby, Curriculum Coordinator Weiss Elementary to Assistant Principal at Montclair Elementary.
All right. I would like to thank the board members, Superintendent Keith Leonard, Deputy Superintendent Sheena Payne, all of the Assistant Superintendent community, and all stakeholders for believing and entrusting in me to serve the community of Montclair Elementary. To my family, thank you for supporting me throughout my educational career. To my son Devon, thank you for sharing me with hundreds of students at this point in my career. I would like to recognize all of my past administrators and colleagues at Global Learning Academy, McArthur Elementary, the START Program, and CA Wise Elementary, as well as my mentors, Dr. Kimberly Thomas, Ms. Nicole Owens-Bragg, Ms. Kelly Cross Tag. You all have played a big part in my growth and development. I look forward to working with Ms. Greenberg to support the faculty and staff of Montclair Elementary School Community. Thank you.
Bradley Vincent, from Media Specialist at West Pensacola Elementary to Coordinator, District Media Resources and Services.
I'll keep this very brief. I'm towards the end, I think. My high school motto was to accept the greater challenge, and that is my plan. And I cannot imagine a more supportive team to do that with. I want to do, I do want to give thanks to all of my amazing colleagues along the way and to my family, and I look forward to serving the district in this new capacity.
Brandy White, from Dean Northview High to Assistant Principal at Tate High School.
Okay, I'll make this really brief. Good evening. School Board members, Superintendent Leonard, Deputy Superintendent Payne, and Director Morgan. I would like to thank you guys for this opportunity to serve the students in our school district as Assistant Principal at Tate High School. I'm blessed to have family and friends and colleagues who've supported me along the way, my CTE people, my Northview family. I just want to thank you guys. As I transition into this new role, I look forward to working with the administration, faculty and staff, students, and members of the Tate community. Thank you, guys.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we will resume. We're at public forum. The purpose of the public forum is to give members of the public the opportunity to address the school board on any matter regarding education and the administration of our schools. In this setting, we as board members are not compelled to answer questions or respond to you, and typically will not engage in back and forth dialogue in this venue. However, this board and the superintendent will note your contact information for a response if appropriate. As always, we invite you to contact any of us by phone or email for follow-up. A list of our meeting times and locations is posted on the Escambia County School District website. Speakers must adhere to the guidelines printed on the back of the speaker form. On the form, please be sure to indicate whether your intention is to speak at the public forum or to a specific item on tonight's agenda. Please direct your comments to the chair. You are expected to be respectful when you're addressed to the board. You are also asked to use titles and not individual names. Personal attacks against school board members, superintendent, staff, or employees will not be tolerated. And if you fail to follow these guidelines, you will be warned by the chair and subject to removal if violations continue. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes. Mrs. Odom will serve as parliamentarian, Ms. Buswell is our timekeeper, and we'll start the timer with your opening remarks. The buzzer will sound when your time has elapsed, and when the timer sounds, please bring your comments to a close. Our first speaker is Paula Montgomery, followed by Neil McDonald. Ms. Montgomery, you have three minutes.
Thank you for hearing us. I've told you before that I have a grandchild. She's at, she's in middle school now. I want to talk about how important it is to have access to a large variety of books. Books are an important window in the world beyond our immediate experiences, and they present a possibility for enlarging our compassion for our fellow human beings. I call this universal compassion empathy, the ability to walk in someone else's shoes. Books can expose us and our children to the common thread of humanity. An example is the book by Malala about her experiences in Afghanistan under the Taliban and later in England. Her fears and hopes are something that any child can empathize with, and although her religion and her skin color may be different. Another example might be a biography, which I believe has been removed from our books, by a black child who grew up in the Jim Crow era. I think she went on to become a sports star. Once again, the hopes and fears of these people can be universally felt by our children or anyone who reads these books. The books are a window into the world and our common human humanity. Books showing people who are different can broaden empathy and love. They can also reach the hearts of lonely children who feel there is no one out there that is like them, no one who knows how they feel. That's a very lonely place to be. A book that shows others with the same problems can be a boost to that child in their self-confidence and possibly help guide them through tough times. And thank you.
Command. Neil McDonald has three minutes, and he will be followed by Melanie Eubanks, who will have six minutes.
Mr. Chairman and the rest of the school board, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I attended the regular workshop meeting yesterday, and one of the main discussions was in regard to Keith Leonard's contract that will be voted on tonight. I was very disappointed that almost 32 minutes were taken so that everything was in place to ensure that everyone knows that Keith's position is just interim. Keith handled it very well, but I really hope that everyone will really rally behind him and allow him to lead this district as our superintendent. I really personally don't know Keith very well, but I know a lot about him, and I've admired him for many years. My son Joel would often talk positively about the football coach at Tate, and who was also his PE teacher. Keith was a real encouragement to my, and mentor to my son. He encouraged Joel to go out for football, even though Joel wouldn't add much to the team, but Keith knew that it would build character and leadership in Joel. So Joel went out for football, and then Keith ended up taking the job in the district, and was no longer the coach. Well, it was Joel's senior year, and unfortunately Tate lost every game that year. I don't blame that on you, though, because you were not the coach, okay? But Joel had a fun year, and it was really fun today reading Joel's comments about the football season in his yearbook today. Because they kind of highlighted him in there, and I thought, wow, and Joel, I called him and he said, I don't even remember saying that. I didn't remember that. But Joel ended up in Tate's Hall of Fame, and I truly appreciate the wonderful teachers and coaches who imparted into Joel's life and my other son's lives as well. Keith has an outstanding reputation among many people that I trust. And as you know, Keith was a finalist for the superintendent's job three years ago. I've attended most school board meetings in 2023, and I'm very impressed by the way that he handles himself and how he deals with issues that arise. So I say, give this man a chance to oversee our district, and let's see how it goes. There'll be plenty of time to get a selection process in place, but I predict that if you support him and give him a real chance, you might just realize you have the right person already. Thank you.
Melanie Eubanks. Ms. Eubanks, okay, and you have three minutes donated from Lynn Hahn. Lynn, would you raise your hand? Okay, you're in the audience. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and thank you for your service. Our future as a county and community is in your hands. Thank you for selecting leadership who will protect our children from being sexualized and safeguard their innocence. After yesterday's workshop, it's obvious that some people weren't real happy about the interim superintendent, but I say, let's give him a chance to fulfill his contract and work with him and not against him. There's nothing to be afraid of, and he might do a good job. One person cannot be expected to fix all wrongs. I'm sure the superintendent feels no pressure to do a good job for the students and their parents, the board, the administrators, and teachers. I remind you of your statement on the website. Working in unity is important, especially while we are in transition. Trust, respect, community engagement are the three most important things to your leadership team. Thankfully, the word "control" is not on there. How do we free ourselves of politics and other people's agendas that are all around us? Could it be putting the children first? What are the character qualities we want in our schools? The qualities we want, we need to portray ourselves. We need to build on a foundation of truth. Truth stands the test of time. It holds up to opposition. It's constant. It endures. I have heard it said that truth is a moral concept rooted in God's character. We need a good foundation so trust, respect, community... We need a good foundation so trust, respect, community, and community engagement can abound. We need transparency, accountability, integrity. These need to become more than words. We need to let them govern our lives personally and collectively. Yesterday, we saw communication in action with the SIR funding report. One thing that stood out to me, that almost $2 million out of this funding was spent on digital books, and yes, I am concerned about the contents of those books. I am thankful that we have heard yesterday's workshop about HB 1069. It says if it cannot be read from this podium or graphics shown on these screens, then it cannot be in our schools. That would be great. This can help put the children first, protecting their developing minds. My concern is that, my concern is those that are wanting to keep as much of this content that doesn't abide by the law, how to keep it in our schools and circumvent the law. I would like to see personnel voluntarily protect our children from sexualization and protect their innocence. I would like to see all digital books meet that. Book fairs, scholastics, Myon, AR, everywhere, in all languages, meet those criterias. I welcome our new media specialist. I hope she's committed to err on the side of caution when it comes to new book selection and the task of removing appropriate books in all forms and in all languages. We need to put children first. I urge our superintendent, lawyer, and media specialist to be careful as they put community standards in writing, keeping in mind, if it can't be read here, it is out. Our new media specialist also shared a concern about defining what is age-appropriate. How is that standard going to be determined? Why my skepticism? Because before May of 16th, May 16th of 2023, we still had books on our shelf that had pornography in them, and there are some children that were hurt and their innocence was taken because they came across this in their AR reading. According to Psychology Today, Medical News Today, pornography is addictive. It affects the brain. It hurts relationships. It breaks down the family unit. Divorce rates increase and double. It promotes loneliness, and it encourages risky behaviors, just to name a few. It is no wonder, no wonder that human traffic, molestation, incest, abuse sexually, physically, emotionally, neglect, sexual immorality, impurity, rape, indecency, drunkenness, drug addictions, carousing, and things like this are rampant in our society. We do not want to promote these behaviors among our students, parents, teachers, or administrators. We want to put our children first. We want our books to meet HB 1069. How are we going to govern ourselves to follow the law? As I stated before, one person cannot fix all the wrongs. It's going to take everyone working together, having a foundation of truth and honesty. We need transparency, accountability, respect, and integrity. I am not hopeful, or I am hopeful that our school board will be unanimous in removing books with explicitly explicit sexual content, and they will be age-appropriate. I'm hopeful that our superintendent and school board will work together in unity, making our schools better for students and teachers. We can abide by the law. We can promote goodness. During this transition, let us even be more committed to protecting our children from sexualization and safeguarding their innocence. Thank you.
Ma'am. Julie Patton, who will be followed by Vicky Baggett. Julie Patton, okay.
I'm just going to make a quick comment today. What this, I've been coming to these meetings for several weeks, and what this reminds me of more than anything is the point when Lynette Webb was on the school board in the 80s, when I was moving back here. And she was very conservative, and she objected to absolutely everything that was brought up, and the results of that was that it pretty much shut the school board down in terms of doing the business that they were supposed to be doing. You know, when Mr. Leonard was, I mean, when the question was whether the superintendent here would stay, part of the objection was that there were all, there were all kinds of things he hadn't done. And I think that if we are focused on banned books in this way, there are going to be a lot of things that can't be done. I heard about your hopes and dreams, Mr. Leonard, and how, how Mr. Adams was hoping that very soon you would be putting them into effect, and I think that that is really not going to be possible unless we figure out some way to deal with these books that does not take so much of everybody's time. I'm really disturbed about the fact that sexuality is such an issue with the people who are objecting to the books. Sexuality is simply part of human and animal nature, and it's part of the world. And I was talking to a friend who's my age the other day, and she was joking about the fact that she went to college without having any idea how sex between a man and a woman worked. And I think that that's what happened when there was nothing but very, very scoured books in school and in the curriculum. It was boring partly, but it also left a lot of people really ignorant about what happened in relationships between people. And I think that that is quite a problem that we need to be addressing. The other issue is that the world is full of various content, and if a person or a child has no idea what the content of the world that may be approaching him or her is, he or she is not really very equipped to deal with it. And so I, I urge us to find some faster way of putting this banned book discussion aside so that you can do the work that you were elected to do.
Yes, ma'am. Vicky Baggett, you have three minutes from Steve Mack. Steve, if you'll raise, okay? And the next would be Vanessa Reynolds.
Good evening to you, board members, Ms. Odom and Mr. Leonard. I think I'm going to venture off of my paper for just a minute. There seems to be a common theme every time that I come to these board meetings about banned books. The definition of a banned book is a book you can no longer get. Our school district has no responsibility to provide every single book that is available in this world to minor children. As a matter of fact, it's exactly the opposite. You have a duty and an obligation to make sure that we follow the law. Period. End of story. It does not matter what you think. It does not matter what I think as to what is appropriate. We have to follow the law. It is that simple. My name is Vicky Baggett. I am a citizen and an educator in this district. Superintendent Leonard, thank you, thank you, thank you for taking the initiative to follow the law, anticipate potential violations of state and/or federal law regarding content and age-inappropriate books in our public school libraries, and coming up with the emergency rule. You are right. This new rule is a very smart move to protect the board, those at the district level, the librarians, the teachers, but please, let's not forget those who are the most important in all of that, in all of this, and it's our minors' children. I have been reading and discovering obscene books in our district for over a year now, since the end of school, and anybody in this room and anybody who's watching this on the television can go online to our website, and you can see these pictures and these passages that I'm about to talk about yourself. You can see it with your own eyes, and they are unedited. Since the end of school, you can see these for yourself on the district spreadsheet of submitted book challenges. I have found books in our schools just since the end of May with pictures of women straddling men in bed while having sex, complete with all of the oohs and ahs in the bubble graphics to indicate their sexual pleasure. These are at our high schools. These sorts of pictures were on several pages. I have found other books mocking various religions and showcasing more nudity with pictures of women dressed in nun's clothing, yet bearing their breasts while having their cross necklaces dangling down for all of the so-called googly-eyed priests to see and admire. I found a book last week with no pictures whatsoever but entire passages about how the main character justifies beating a woman simply because he wanted to punish her with violent sex. One paragraph from that book's pages had the F-word, the C-word, and the P-word three times each, just in that one simple paragraph. Is this educational? Is this necessary to what we're trying to do with our students? Everybody sitting on this board has to agree that these sorts of books serve no purpose in our school system, other than to confuse and to conflict the thinking of minors. And thankfully, the State Department has now made this very clear for us. These sorts of books cannot and will not be tolerated. Books in libraries must follow the same laws that classroom libraries and other instructional materials must follow, something that I and several other people have been saying all along. This makes so much logical sense, regardless of this self-selection jargon. All of our school books provided by taxpayers' funds and made available in public schools must be governed by certain guidelines. Obviously, for too long, our district has been crossing the line to see just how far this line can be pushed. The time has now come to get into compliance. I am so thankful that so many people have now become aware of these violations and are diligently becoming proactive to help protect children from inappropriate content. Thank you again, Mr. Leonard, for moving this forward. You have done more in two weeks than our prior superintendent did regarding this situation with me in the entire year that I worked with him on it. Your leadership skills and desire to be in compliance are already showing that you have the courage, the tenacity, and the determination to do what is expected and what is your and our duty. I, for one, am willing to keep trying to make our library media specialist jobs easier and ultimately the board's job easier by continuing to find and submit age and content-inappropriate books for review. If this is the way that you will run this school district, I can promise you, you will have an entire force of community members and teachers right behind you. I heard someone up here say in this workshop yesterday that we need to hurry up and gather a search committee for the next superintendent. Why? You did that before, and look how that turned out. $40,000 spent just to find out that Mr. Leonard was the number one candidate for the job. Again, board members, let's use some common sense. Most of us really, really like what we are seeing so far. We have our much-needed superintendent right here in front of us. Mr. Leonard, carry on, sir.
Vanessa Reynolds will have six minutes. Three minutes from Linda Fussell.
Good afternoon. My name is Vanessa Reynolds, and I am the chair for the Escambia County Chapter, Defense of Democracy. Defense of Democracy is a nonpartisan, again, nonpartisan, nonprofit organization dedicated to advocating for students, parents, educators, and administrators who work to maintain communities as well as public education systems that support and enhances our shared experiences, regardless of religious beliefs, cultural background, or sexual orientation. If anyone is interested in learning more about Defense of Democracy, they can go to defensodemocracy.org. If you are not aware, there is a Moms for Liberty chapter in Santa Rosa County. Defense of Democracy was formed to fight back against Moms for Liberty, who have been attacking school boards across the country. This month, the Southern Poverty Law Center has labeled Moms for Liberty as an anti-government extremist group. I mention Moms for Liberty because Vicky Baggett was in an article in South Santa Rosa News on May 31st, where she was at a Moms for Liberty meeting, sharing tips on how to get content removed. According to an article by Judd Legum of popular.info, Vicky is or was also a member of the Daughters of the Confederacy, which has been labeled as a neo-Confederate white nationalist group by the Southern Poverty Law Center.
We're not going to pick on individuals. I don't know, the education...
Also needs to stick to the topic of public education.
Okay. Well, I find it pretty abhorrent that not only is this person allowed to, you know, just go after all the books, but...
And we're working from the parliamentarian and myself.
These challenges are putting an undue burden on our teachers and media specialists, who should be spending time on shaping the minds of the students of Escambia County. I'm also going to read briefly just an article that was written a couple months ago from Dan Rather. It is titled, "Stop It." There are a lot of reasons bigots are focusing their hatred on transgender people. Gender fluidity is a concept foreign to how many we're raised, and thus it can be disorienting to comprehend. It challenges the binary many of us learned as children and believed to be utterly fundamental. What did you have is often the first question new mothers are asked from family and friends, and the implications of the query are understood even if they go unstated. Did you have a boy or a girl? It is also understood that the implications of that question will endure far beyond infancy. Gender is seen as porturanious for what the rest of life will entail. This was a time when biological sex was determined everything from one's likely occupation to one's legal rights. Boys and girls have different aisles in toy stores and sections in clothing departments. In many ways, we have made progress toward gender equality. We have women in positions of political power and leading businesses. We have women firefighters, police officers, and pilots, but we also have a ways to go. And the recent rollback of abortion rights shows we are capable of losing ground. Into all of this complexity comes the rise in trans awareness and its backlash. While it is understandable that children and adults who do not fit into a traditional gender overlay could be challenging, could be a challenging reality for many, we should be clear that this makes it all the more important that we try to understand. Science informs us that gender is often a blurry concept in nature. History proves that transgender identities in humans are not new. We can gain understanding from medical and mental health professionals about responding with care and empathy. And we should be clear that claims of this is abhorrent, this isn't how things should be done, or this isn't natural, or this is dangerous, are the kind of rhetoric used to attack the other, no matter who it may be. We have seen these attacks logged at other members of the LGBTQ community. We have seen them target interracial marriage, the customs of non-Christians, and communities of immigrants. We have seen discrimination wielded time and time again as a cudgel for those with power to bolster their standing by picking on others. It is bullying, pure and simple. The attacks on drag queens and others in transgender communities as groomers or prone to child abuse are particularly despicable. There is no evidence backing these allegations, and those who push them are often conveniently quiet about those who have been prosecuted for abuse but belong to groups more aligned with conservative values like the clergy, Boy Scouts, and even Republican politics. The purpose of these attacks on the trans community is transparent. It's about political power and a power built on division. It's about picking on those who have the least ability to defend themselves, including and especially children. We can try to wrestle in good faith around the implications of a changing society. We can discuss what this might mean for sports or bathroom design. We can be sympathetic to those who are still early in their journey of understanding. But as history has shown, we should not be quiet. We should not look the other way. We should not allow this hatefulness to take root and distract us from the real problems with which we must contend. Those who are being targeted... Those who are being targeted must know that they are not alone. Thank you.
Pam Schwartz is next, but Pam, there's on your form, you have both speaking to 7-E and speaking on education and social injustice. And so, did you want to speak to 7-E?
I see them as related.
So, do you want to speak now or when we pull that item, 7-E?
I think with the comments that have been made, I can do it now, if that's okay.
Fine, but I want you to know that...
I think it'll be relevant.
Okay, and then you have three minutes donated from Barbara Beck?
Correct.
Right, so you have six minutes.
And I'm going to try to edit my remarks because there are some things that have been said that I agree with. But I did teach for 30 years. I was fortunate to have a foundation of faith, hope, and love with parents, and my in-laws also grew up during the Depression and were military families and people during World War II who fought against fascism. Neo-Nazism is here today, and I am concerned that the role models that we're seeing in our government leaders, from the national level down to the state level and sometimes even here in our local levels, that we are being such poor role models as adults for our young people, that we are causing a mental health crisis in our community, in our country, and in the world with the violence and the hatred that is going on, with partisan politics eroding our country's democracy, and the government institutions that even government leaders in Congress and other places are trying to undermine our citizens' trust in our government, when our congressional people are attacked with the transfer of power, when we see violence in demonstrations, when we see young people who believe that a gun is the best way to solve a problem, by the example set by our congressmen who won't do anything about mass shootings in schools and other places with getting rid of assault rifles and those kinds of things, and these young people with mental health problems think they can grab a gun from their parent's stock or whatever, and if they've been bullied, if they have a serious mental health problem that's not been addressed in education, then they take the gun to their schools and murder people en masse. And this is my concern, that the mental health and well-being of our young people is in danger, and they are our future. They are the leaders of the future. So, think about what happens when we have divisiveness going on with meetings like this, with our state leaders and laws that are passed, that are trying to keep the politicians that want to stay in power and for their own personal profit in power. They are changing laws that suppress voting rights of people of color, people who cannot get out easily and vote that are elderly or disabled, and they're making it more difficult to vote even when that is our voice here in America. Even organizations like the League of Women Voters, that is nonpartisan, and the suffragettes had to fight and have only had the right to vote for 100 years. Women's rights are being removed for women's health, their family choices, and our privacy and things that are in the Bill of Rights and that catch all on innumerable things that it means the right to privacy and free will. We are seeing those rights taken away, and the adults that are setting a poor role model for our children, they're watching what we do. And our teachers are being demonized, and our public schools are being demonized, and it is a crying shame when we are not providing a broad range of materials. Teachers are not sexualizing children. We need a broad range of materials to let them know the realities of life. Teachers need to have children trust them. Teachers are afraid of what they can say and cannot say. Nonprofits that have given books so children have books at home have been kept out of schools as volunteers while we make up our minds about how we're going to implement these policies. I just read the governor's budget breakdown, and figures don't lie, but liars do figure. And the bragging about the increased money in education, the money in public education has been diminished as it's been redirected. Taxpayer dollars unregulated with little oversight in the way our public schools have to be regulated and have oversight. And the facilities, such as the things at Warrington Middle School, we have a shortage of custodians and support personnel. Teachers are rotating door who come in. They cannot take the stress, and the state is still with the extra money in the bottom five of the nation in average salaries, and I dare say Escambia is at the bottom of the state in what we pay our teachers. Overworked, underpaid, and then bureaucratic busywork. It's not the books that are the problem. I dare say the technology in the homes, in the home schools, in some of these private-for-profit charters in other schools, child abuse happens in every area. There's child abuse in churches. There's child abuse in every economic level. There's child abuse in every race. It is everywhere. Our schools were places where our children could break their silence, and it could be discovered. Now, we're sending with this universal voucher where corporations get big tax breaks, and we're not regulating what happens with child abuse in those homes now that are home schooled. What are these people who are so concerned about what's happening in our public schools going to do about all of the abuse that goes on? The domestic violence that our children see in these homes? The gun violence? All of these issues? Poverty is a predictor of dropouts, and we should know that our children are our future. I beg of you to consider the example that we're setting.
Thank you, Pam. Our next speaker is Erin Schneider, who will be followed by Pashelle Schneider.
Hello, board. Part of the problem that we're facing nowadays is that we've gotten rid of God. We think we have, and so we face all these problems that this lady was talking about a moment ago. As far as the books go, Jesus said in Matthew 5:29, "If your right eye causes you to sin, tear it out and throw it away; for it is better that you lose one of your members than that your whole body be thrown into hell." So, we have pictures in our books that are nude pictures of a man and a woman. They're naked, and they're having sex. So, I'm just asking, what of that would not be sexually immoral? They're not married. They're just people having sex. Jesus would not have gone to the extent of telling us to remove our right eye and throw it away. Sexual immorality was something that was okay because it created empathy. We don't need sexual immorality to create empathy. I think if you know that someone in your family is being abused, you're not going to tell the little child in your family, "Why don't you go read this sexually immoral book that has a picture of this woman straddling a man? They're naked, and maybe that'll help you to deal with the situation." No one gives books to their children when they're going through problems. They just counsel them. Call the police. I go to another scripture. It's Philippians 2:9 through 11. So, the Bible says, "Therefore God has exalted him and bestowed on him the name that is above every name, so that the name of Jesus every knee should bow in heaven and on earth and under the earth; and every tongue confesses that Jesus Christ is Lord, to the glory of God the Father." If you go to a church and you don't confess Jesus as Lord, that you obey Him, then you are not a follower of Christ. And when Jesus says to pluck out your eye and throw it away so you don't go to hell, you are not a follower of Christ if you tell children to read these kinds of books. You're not. Because the Lord said to take your eye out, and He said that if you would be better off to have a millstone tied around your leg and be thrown into the depths of the sea. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Pashelle Schneider, followed by Joshua Luther.
Hello, my name is Pashelle Schneider. Thank you for having me. Every person who's urging the board to keep sexually explicit books is urging the board to break the law. We need to protect our children from evil, not expose them to it. At the meeting yesterday, certain board members are already planning on not liking the performance of the interim superintendent. They're already planning a worldwide or nationwide search for the next superintendent. One of them said that what the voters voted for by going to appointed was that voters wanted to put the decision on the board. The voters wanted the board to make the decision without public input. Obviously, the people do want to give input and still want to make that decision. Even the people who voted to go to appointed clearly don't want the board to make the decision, or they wouldn't have been here at the last meeting telling the board who they wanted you to appoint. The same board members who are already planning to hire a different superintendent are the ones who said they didn't want to throw the district into turmoil by firing the last superintendent. But now it seems they don't mind throwing the district into turmoil by starting a search for a new superintendent. The interim superintendent was appointed fairly by the board. The board followed correct appointment procedure and installed him as our superintendent for the time being. Escambia County needs a superintendent who is from here, who knows the district, and who cares about education and upholding the law. We need a superintendent who will follow the law and get rid of smut in our libraries and will focus on reading, writing, and math as opposed to social agendas. We now have a superintendent who will follow the law and who has the same policy ideas and values that align with the majority of Escambia County. Mr. Leonard was one of the top four picks from the first go-around. The board needs to treat him as if he is our permanent superintendent, rather than distracting and focusing on what they can find not to like him about. Give him the benefit of being our superintendent before you start looking to replace him. He's going to do a great job. He is the right fit for Escambia County. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Joshua Luther. And after Joshua will be Rob Bennett.
Those who love lies hate the truth, and those who love the truth will hate lies. Those who love what is good will hate what is evil. Furthermore, those who love the truth cannot compromise with lies without giving up the truth. Those who wish to conserve biblical values cannot compromise without failing at their goal. But on the other hand, the ends of the liars and perverters are furthered by compromise. While Psalm 10 does require that a vile person be despised in the eyes of Christians, we do not hate any person, and that we desire that all turn from their wickedness and follow Christ.
Sir, you need to connect your comments to public education?
This relates very much to public education. And in them doing this, we might then accept them as brothers and sisters. Jesus, when He was here on this earth, was crucified by those who loved lies. They crucified Him because of His unwillingness to compromise on the truth. Yet His death displayed the wickedness of men in another greater way. For all that Christ suffered was for what we deserved, for our sins. As the prophet foretold, He was wounded for our transgressions. He was bruised for our iniquities. The chastisement of our peace was upon Him, and with His stripes we are healed. All we like sheep have gone astray. We have turned everyone to His own way, and the Lord hath laid on Him the iniquity of us all. And this we see the wrath of God towards sin, and that He could not even spare His own Son, while Jesus bore the sins of God's people. And here is the great love of God, in that whoever will forsake his sin and follow Christ, God will pardon his sins through Christ's sacrifice and adopt that person as His beloved child. But those who continue pursuing lies and abominations, we will resist. In the beginning, God created the heavens and the earth.
Mr. Luther, you need to connect this to public education.
I am. But you teach that we are products of billions of accidents. Hitler believed this perverse theory, and through its framework determined that Jews were not as evolved as others. It is clear that all men are created equal, but it is absurd to assume that all are evolved equal. Hitler asked, "Why can we not be as cruel as nature?" I ask you, "Why can't you be as cruel as nature?" To that, I will answer, "You are." How many hundreds of preborn boys and girls have been murdered by students in the public high schools of this county? It is time for us to be men and deal with the real problems. It is time to stop striking out at T-ball and start fighting the war. Soldiers of Christ, arise. Fight against the devil and his lies.
Rob Bennett? Or is it Bob? Okay.
Ms. Payne, thank you for your words during this special meeting to appoint Mr. Leonard. We can disagree and still be cordial and work together respectfully. Great words. I paraphrase just a little bit, probably. Serious question about the SRO agreement. Why is a private citizen delivering a memo email of policy from the sheriff's office to the school system? Email from me, 11/9/22, to you guys about changing the sheriff's policy on interviewing students? How come the sheriff didn't send you guys anything about that? I did a public records request to the sheriff's department, and I copied Ms. Odom with the results. Their only record of transmitting or emailing to the school system was when I copied them on emails to all of you about the change in the policy back in November 9th of 2022. I'll send you a copy. Definitely shows a lack of good faith for the agreement. I believe that's Article 10 or 11. Hopefully, this gives you a little bit more negotiation power for this agreement that's going to be probably approved next month. Why this happens, why public servants don't provide information between each group, it's horrible. If you, if a contractor or supplier didn't fill out their contract or PO for you guys, you guys would litigate or make sure they honor their contract. You would want those goods. This is the same thing. Do something about it. Employee annual reviews. Last year, I reviewed a 2021 annual evaluation on administrative dean, who is evaluated as a guidance counselor. The job descriptions are very different, and the review doesn't allow the supervisor to really evaluate the person in the actual job they perform. I'm currently waiting on this evaluation of the same person for the 2021 school year. Hopefully, the correct job description was evaluated. Last time I was here, leaving the parking lot, somebody pulled me aside and said, "Do you notice about these neat disciplinary issues? Did you know they're backlogged in being filed in the HR department?" What I was told, I sure hope I didn't waste money to evaluate a personnel file that didn't have the disciplinary information in it that I was looking for. And last thing, don't beat yourselves up about being the board that sent Warrington Middle School to a charter school. Thirty-seven years ago, my mother toured Warrington Middle, moving here with her four children, and Warrington Middle wasn't up to her standard then. It hasn't gotten better in 37 years. Do yourselves a favor. Don't put it all on yourselves. Let the charter school have a chance at it and see if they can make a success of it or any positive outcome of it. Thirty-seven years of your effort have proven not to be a success there. Thank you.
That brings us to the end of the public forum. We do have a speaker who wants to speak on a agenda item. That's item 40C. So, when we get to that part of the agenda, we will stop again and then have the speaker speak at that time. All right. We concluded the public forum. Next on the agenda is approval of the minutes, our first item, A, April 28th, special meeting. I have a minute. Can I get a motion?
I move we accept the...
I move we accept the, the minutes as published.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, please vote.
Prove five zero.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Item B, May 1st emergency meeting.
Move the approval of the minutes.
I'll second. Moved and seconded. Thank you. Any discussion? None, please vote.
Prove five zero.
Thank you, sir. Item C, the May 11th special workshop.
I'll move the May 11th special workshop meeting.
Have a motion?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Prove five zero.
Thank you, sir. Item D, May 12th regular workshop.
The recommendation is to approve the May 12th.
I'll second. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Approve five zero.
Thank you, sir. Item E, the May 12th emergency meeting.
I move the May 12th emergency meeting.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Prove five zero.
Thank you, sir. Item F, the May 16th regular meeting.
I'll move that to May 16th regular board meeting. Be approved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Prove five zero.
Thank you, sir. And item E, the last of the minutes, the May 30th.
Move the adoption of item E.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on May 30th?
G.
G. Oh, well, I'm gonna let you see that. E. It's G.
The motion was, I think, correct. I'm sorry, who's second?
It's May 30th special meeting.
And who seconded?
I did.
Okay.
Item G. I said G. And no discussion, please vote.
Prove five zero.
Thank you, sir. We have completed the administrative appointments, so we'll, that was A. Uh, next item is B, administrative reappointments. And on this one, I am recusing myself because I have a relative who's part of that.
Move to adopt superintendent's recommendations for reappointments.
I'll second. Well, any discussion?
Yeah, my discussion is, I also have a relative and I've been a part of this for years, so I, I do know, are we changing or?
No, no. As we discussed yesterday, it's just a matter of personal preference. I think with a class of employees this large, that recusal is not required, but it, it is something that certainly board members have done in the past.
I'm gonna vote.
The question is whether it inures to your personal gain, and when you've got a class of people that is so large, then it ceases to become a personal gain.
Approve four zero, and Mr. Feckel abstaining.
All right, this brings us to proposed additions, revisions for first reading. Item B, changes to the student progression plan, is there a motion?
I move the advertisement of the student progression plan.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Yes, Ms. Hightower?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to let the superintendent have this opportunity to explain why there's two vacant places, pages in the progression plan. We discussed it yesterday. I know Ms. Morgan's here today, but I just want the public to be aware.
Ms. Morgan, will you please come address the blank pages?
Because it does say intentional, but she has a plan for when.
She has a really good plan.
Yes. And it's not her fault that they're blank. No. So each year, we wait on the state to give us an updated version of that, and it, it does an excellent, they do an excellent job laying out the progression for every level for high schools. So those, those, we've checked with the state department, they, we all know that we have the financial literacy requirement now, so that's what we're waiting on for them to update. So as soon as they do, we'll put that in this document. If they don't have it ready by August, when we approve the, the progression plan, I will modify it to reflect that and then is, and put it in there, and then we'll all, because we've done that in the past, because sometimes it's a year or so before we get the updated document. They've assured us we'll have it soon, but I'm not sure we'll have it by August. So I can modify it because it's the financial literacy piece that we'll put in there and, and put that in, and then we'll update it when we get the official. But that will, that is official, it's just gonna, their version is just, comes directly from the state, so it will have the same information.
Thank you, ma'am. Thanks for the explanation.
Yes, sir.
I wanted to make sure Ms. Morgan had the opportunity to explain it for several reasons, but the main one is hours on top of hours on top of hours on top of days she pours in with her team to develop the student progression plan each and every year. You do a great job. Thank you, Lisa.
I appreciate it. There's a lot of folks in the audience that work with me on that, so thank you very much.
Any other, Mr. Williams? Oh, no. Sorry. No other discussion? Please vote.
Passes five zero.
Thank you, sir. Moving on, we have five items for public hearing this evening after a motion and a second I'll call for the public hearing. First item, A, changes to school board policy, Chapter 3, school operations, is there a motion?
I'll move that.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. We'll go to the public hearing. Anyone here to address that at public hearing? Seeing none, is there any discussion from the board? Seeing none, please vote.
Approve five zero.
Thank you, sir. I will take this opportunity to say that all these items were discussed during the workshops, so we're not passing over them without having reviewed them thoroughly at previous meetings. Next item, B, the 2023-2024 Elementary Code of Student Conduct, is there a motion?
I move to adopt the Elementary Code of Student Conduct for 2023-2024.
Second the motion.
Second. Mr. Slaton, did you, okay. Moved and seconded. Anyone here to speak at the public hearing? About the Elementary Code of Student Conduct? No one speaking? Any discussion from the board? Seeing none, please vote.
Prove five zero.
Thank you, sir. Item C, is the 2023-2024 Secondary Code of Student Conduct, is there a motion?
Move, do we adopt this item?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Anyone here to speak, public hearing, about the Secondary Code of Student Conduct? Seeing no one, is any discussion from the board? Seeing none, please vote.
Prove five zero.
Thank you, sir. The next item is item D, modifications, changes, and/or deletions of school attendance zone boundaries, is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'll move the school attendance zone boundaries.
Thank you, sir.
Second the motion.
Thank you, sir. Moved and seconded. Anyone to speak at public hearing? About the school attendance zone boundaries? Yes, you can, you can ask. The, Mr. Dennis would be the best one if it would be, or Mr. Leonard.
This is about the Pleasant Grove Elementary School Attendance Zone. Mr. Dennis, you want to expound upon that?
Uh, per the board, the board rulemaking process and the work product of your school attendance zone advisory committee, this is the recommendation for the attendance zone associated with the brand-new Pleasant Grove Elementary School, which represents a closure of the former elementary school and the annexation of a portion of Helen Caro and a small portion of Blue Angels in the aggregate attendance zone.
And it also puts the entirety of the Naval Air Station Elementary into the Pleasant Grove Attendance Zone.
That is correct, sir.
Any discussion from board members? Seeing none, please vote.
Approve five zero.
Thank you, sir. Lastly, item E, is the Emergency Rule Adoption, 4.06 Educational Media Materials, is there a motion?
Move the adoption of this rule.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Anyone to speak at public hearing about this rule? Seeing no one, and board members, Ms. Hightower?
Um, I would just like to give the superintendent an opportunity to, or the, the attorney an opportunity to explain why we're doing this emergency rule instead of the normal process.
I'll, I'll go first about a couple of things, Ellen, we can do sort of like we did the other day. I want to thank Michelle White, Bradley Vincent, and Mrs. Odom for pulling this all together. I want to make sure that I say this publicly, because some of the things that have, that have been said today, sometimes it's just about timing. We have been working together as an executive team on what we were going to do as they were working through the legislative session. It's culminated at this time, so it just happens to be that at this time where the responsibility lies is with myself. But I don't want you to think that when Dr. Smith was here that we were not working on it, because we were. I think that's something that I have to say publicly. Ma'am? There are two things that I want to be sure that we, that I say tonight, that were mentioned extensively, was it yesterday? The other meeting, is, is this. One, we, we know we must comply with the law, and that's what this emergency rule will allow us to do. And number two, and this is really important to all of us, it protects our people. Now, I want to make certain that everybody understands that Ms. Vincent has worked out a really good plan that is in, within this school board rule that will allow our media specialists and assistants at our, at our schools to work this summer to make sure all books are vetted, and that's all instructional materials are vetted. So I want you to be patient with us as a public, that it may take a while for our media centers to reach full usage, because we're going to make sure, just like I said, that all of our people are protected and that we are complying with the law. I met with our principals, it's been a couple of weeks ago now, and, you know, there were two things I told them when we got through a meeting. We care about each other and we love each other, and when you do that, you, you make sure that everybody is taken care of, and that's what we're going to do. So I'll let Ms. Odom go into the actual law I wanted to talk about as to why we have this rule.
The legislature passed House Bill 1069 this legislative session, which did a number of things, some of which are challenged book process were directly contrary to. Specifically, we had a provision in our policy that allowed, if a book was removed from the shelf because it was challenged as pornographic or obscene, we, believing that parents should be able to decide if they want their kids to have access to that, left in a provision that parents could consent to allow their children to read that book. The legislature has decided that that is not the case, and so any book that is challenged on the basis that it had, is obscene or pornographic, or a new category which was established by House Bill 1069, contains depictions or descriptions of sexual conduct as described, as defined in the obscenity statute. If, if the books are challenged for that reason, they have to be removed from books, from the shelves within five days. We do that by practice, but we do not currently have that timeframe written into our policy, so the emergency rule adds that in, so all of our media specialists are clear that it has to be gone within five days if it's challenged on one of those two bases. And then secondly, it also removes all of the provisions that allow a parent to consent to allow their child to read a book that is currently under challenge, that has been removed for those two reasons. It also expands the definition of library to include classroom libraries, and that's, that's pretty much the large scale. The reason that we did it on an emergency basis was because we currently have a policy that is directly contrary to what the new legislation says. The new legislation goes into effect July 1. We wanted to make sure that we were in full compliance with the law.
Thank you, Ms. Odom.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent, and Ms. Odom, and everyone who was involved. I think that explanation would be sufficient, but if there are further questions that people want to talk to, you know how to reach out and contact the appropriate people. Any other discussion from the board on this? Seeing none, please vote.
Passes five zero.
Thank you, sir. The consent agenda, the next item of business is the approval of the consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second the motion.
Moved and seconded. Are there any items to be pooled? I'll read each category below and wait for a response. Our curriculum? Curriculum is items, um, eight through nineteen. Seeing none, we'll move on next to finance. Finance, items twenty through twenty-four. Slaton, you have? No. Seeing none. Next is human resources, which is items twenty-five through twenty, oh, yes, through twenty-nine. Twenty-five through twenty-nine. Items to be pooled? All right, seeing none. Operations, operations, which is thirty through thirty-nine.
Mr. Chair?
Thirty-one A.
Thirty, thirty-one A? Thirty-one A. Mr. Adams wants to pull thirty-one A. Okay. Any other items in the consent agenda? Seeing none, we'll vote on all of the items except thirty-one A. Please, oh, any discussion?
Did you say someone, well, nevermind. That's a different.
That's forty C.
It's forty C. It's not in the consent.
Right, thank you.
Prove. Approve five zero.
All right, so we've approved the consent agenda except for item thirty-one A.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Move the approval of the lease agreement between the School Board of Scamby County, Florida, and Specialized Education Services, Inc.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'll second the motion.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'll just follow up what I said the other day at the workshop. My concern is schools in APZ one for high risk. With that stated, I do know we need the facilities for achieved to, to build the program out more. My hope is, is that the Navy will work with the county commissioners. Hopefully, a year, there's millions of dollars available for encroachment if the Navy is concerned about it. So there is a process, so with that, I'm ready to vote.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote on thirty-one A.
Approve four one.
All right. Thank you, sir. Next, we move into items from the board. Our first item is item B. Yes.
Yes, it is.
First item is item B, appointment of FSBA advocacy committee representative and alternate, is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to ask the board to appoint Mr. Slaton as the FSBA advocacy committee representative.
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded. Mr. Slaton, you're.
Do we have to do it and the alternate, since it's all one motion?
All right, and the alternate would be?
And I volunteered to do that.
And you agree with the second?
Yes.
Okay, moved and seconded on both Mr. Slaton being the, the representative and Ms. Hightower, the alternate. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Approve five zero.
All right, thank you, sir. That brings us to item forty C, interim superintendent contract. We have a speaker, Mr. Aaron Schnare.
Do you want a motion first?
Oh, yes, I think.
I'd like to move the adoption of the, the contract.
I'll second.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. We have the speaker, Aaron Schnare. Okay, thank you. No speaker then. Any discussion from the board? Seeing none, please vote.
Approve five zero.
Thank you, sir. Our next item forty-one, items from the superintendent, student discipline. First item B, the formal hearing requests and recommended orders. Mr. Superintendent, what's your recommendation?
Recommend, recommend approval for item B, formal hearing request and recommended orders, as noted on the board agenda with details provided in the board backup.
Is there a motion?
I'll move the superintendent's recommendation.
I'll second. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Approve five zero.
Thank you, sir. Next item is item C, disciplinary reassignments. Mr. Superintendent, what is your recommendation?
Recommend approval, disciplinary reassignments, as noted on the board agenda with details provided in the board backup.
Thank you, sir. Is there a motion?
Move, we accept the superintendent's recommendation.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion from board members? Seeing none, please vote.
Approve five zero.
Thank you, sir. Moving on, items from the superintendent other. The first item A, agreement for legal services, what is your recommendation?
Recommend approval for item A, as noted on the board agenda with details provided in the board backup. Mr. Chair, I'll move his recommendation.
Second.
Moved and seconded, thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Approve five zero.
All right, our next item B is the recommendation of successor trustee. What is your recommendation?
I'll move item B. I'm sorry.
Oh, you're good, keep going, that's fine. Recommend approval of item B, backup in your board agenda.
Do you want to name who the successor trustee is?
Mr. Cross Tag.
I'll move the successor trustee.
Second the motion.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Can I, can I ask, this is what, I mean, normally it's the assistant superintendent that serves in this position, or is this?
It's the superintendent, then there's someone from finance, and there's someone from HR. And it's usually the assistant superintendent of HR.
Okay.
That's why we're doing it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Recommend approval of item C, as noted on the board agenda with details provided in the board backup.
That was approved.
Oh, five zero.
That was approved five, five zero for the... All right, item C is another agreement for legal services, what's your recommendation, item C?
Recommend approval of item C, as noted on the board agenda with details provided in board backup. I'll move the superintendent's recommendation.
I'll second the motion.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Approve five zero.
Thank you, sir. We're up to item D.
Recommend approval for item D, as noted on the board agenda with details provided in the board backup.
Recommend we adopt the superintendent's recommendation.
Thank you, sir.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Approve five zero.
Thank you, sir. Lastly, item E, what is your recommendation?
Recommend approval for item E, as noted on the board agenda with details provided in the board backup.
Is there a motion?
Recommend we follow the district superintendent's recommendation.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? None, please vote.
Approve five zero.
Thank you, sir. This brings us to item, brings us to items from internal auditing. Our first item A is a summary of the inventory adjustment reports, is there a motion?
I'll move the inventory, inventory adjustment report.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, I just want to say again that I am always impressed with how well our, our employees keep up with all of the bits and pieces that we have in our community and, and education, and thank you to the internal auditing staff that does a wonderful job with finding everything. Keep up the good work, everyone.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Approve five zero.
Thank you. Next item is B, the inventory reports for sixty-nine cost centers, is there a motion?
Motion to accept the report.
Thank you, Mr. Slaton.
Second.
So thank you, Ms. Hightower. Moved and seconded. Any discussion on the inventory reports? Seeing none, please vote.
Approve five zero.
Thank you, sir. This concludes our agenda items. Lady is.